I saw them struggling with it.
We do have the IT guys to be able to be ready if this stuff doesn't let me know I can. I'm going to.
So the time. Oh, yeah, we're good.
Sign your name.
Turnover is.
Yeah.
For Mr. Offerman today. About your problem?
Yeah.
No, I haven't talked about that. Over a week, I guess.
Okay. It's on to my text to see if he's going to arrive, but. It's sort of move forward. I call this meeting to order. It's officially six P M. Senator Lee. All right, um. Roll call. Zansky here. Baker.
Here.
Bernard here. Burns is absent, excused. And Offerman. Both. Roll call. Here. This year. All right. Seated of alternates. Like to, uh. Motion that we call Mr. Close. Forward to serve as an alternate in the absence of this burns.
What? Okay, I'm sorry.
To make a motion change. Appoint John McCloud just tonight as an alternate for the event that. Uh, just because Cassie Burns is not here. Right. Even second.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Something, no, um. I was, which. I was talked to by resident, but I have a, uh. Ask if I had a conflict of interest because I have a lawsuit against township, I do not, um. And as long as this doesn't have anything to do with what I have the lawsuit for. Um, I do not have a conflict of interest.
So not pertaining to your lawsuit?
No.
Okay, um, all rise from point.
I'd like to read this school to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great public, we're the richest state. One nation, one God. And you know that this. We can risk him.
Approval of meeting agenda. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. The agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll second that. Tim the favor seconded by Bosansky, all in favor?
Hi.
Great approval of June eleventh, two thousand twenty five, only board of appeals meeting.
I'm ready for some more. additions or additions.
No, they look good. I read through them before that. It looks wonderful to me.
So.
Maybe we have a motion to approve June meeting minutes.
I made a motion to approve the June eleventh, two thousand twenty five meeting go on a minute. What's second?
What's second to that? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I as well. You know us. Identify Millington Township policies for public comment. Um, we do have public comments this evening and our policy is posted. Uh, there's a limit of three minutes per person. Note to participants that the public hearings for the tri-county aggregate appeals were closed on May sixth. And no new information may be accepted or considered for that record. So are there any public comments?
I have a question on that. Is that?
Hi, would you like to come up here and?
Sure.
I'll run the timer. That's just, oh, I mean, you would like. Okay, James. Hey, hang on one second.
Sure.
All right, um. You make that.
Yeah, just due to that, I'm the planning commission and I was a part of the planning commission that made this recommendation. Um, I would have to excuse myself from this tonight of moving and participating.
Thank you, sir. In the absence of Mr. Offerman. Move that we seat Mr. Moore. I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Welcome, Mr. Moore. Contends the richest by essence of all, which I have. I've asked you about. So, um, Mr. Moore, to recede. Have you reviewed all of the information? From our May sixth meeting. Did you watch the video as well? Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a question about your three minute public comment. Does that also include letters submitted to be read?
Does that include letters submitted to be read?
Yes.
Millington County Township Public Comment does not address that.
Because if I wrote you a twenty seven page letter, would you read it all?
Just a question. I ask hard questions.
We have dealt with that. I have we?
Yeah.
With a long letter because I think a township board meetings. It's been shut off at three minutes.
Everything. In my, well, in my opinion, doesn't mean to think that anybody in this room, but me. It ought to be three minutes. Because it is a public comment.
Thank you, sir. That has been brought up to the board.
Okay. And what is the answer?
There has been no answer.
But what will we do this evening? We have a nine page or. Maybe it's not mine. It's a long letter here.
I guess we're gonna have to review that because if you look at it, some people read slower than others, some read faster than others. You know.
I can read fast.
I did not know she had a nine page letter when I asked this question.
Now, I think it's nine.
Not gonna be done three minutes.
One.
Because of your. I'll go back to my, for my public comment, and I'm gonna time it. I want to save a lot of time with that letter being read.
You are limited to your three minutes that you are already exercising, sir.
So I'm on the clock right now?
Yes, sir.
Well, I paused. You said pause. I did pause it because you were answering your question first.
You're limited to your three minutes. Anything else?
Oh. Thank you for not answering that way. Okay, here's my, here's just a comment. I have no idea what was at the last meeting. I didn't. Or somebody didn't come, whatever. Uh, uh, I just want to let the zoning board appeals know. That this has anything to do with. Commercial businesses not being allowed in ag residential. There are all ready. Commercial businesses. Established in Millington Township ag residential areas. You have Barnum Salvage. But on Vassar Road, you have New Lake Child and Family. Up here, uh, family institute on Millington Road. You have Robert Minnicky, the front body of his property, even though it hasn't. Operated as such, it is still its own commercial or the treasurer department. And you have Jeffrey Draper around, uh, Front Road by Sheridan Road. Was a trucking. And if you will slash industrial. Because he was making at one time. First trailers inside the pole barn. And then you have others. That if you want to say they're home businesses. They are violating the ordinances according to. The established ordinances of what is allowed for a home business and whatnot for employing people. Um, I won't get into those right now, but, uh, there I do have quite a list of those. A comment.
Thank you.
Marie Martin three four five. Did you not say that any discussion? There should be no more discussion about this that you were just going?
We may, we have to have public comments. Regulations, but we may not accept any new information for them.
So anybody that talked about it, that's not being considered?
We may not add it to the market.
Well, you know, and if. Compared to what Bob had said about these other businesses. I don't have any, you know, how they were established or whatever, but some of them, if they weren't done properly. Doesn't mean we go ahead and keep doing everything improperly.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Jamie DeCidis. Thank God. Um, re- recognizing your decision that the record is closed, I just want to make a very brief statement, um, just generally. That all zoning approvals are permanent. It can't be made subject to temporary approval or periodic review. So I just want to remind you of that. Let me consider the appeals that I'm reporting, particularly the appeal that relates to the special.
Thank you.
Oops, and Mr. Wersh comments.
Please go forward and state your name and please direct your statements to us and also not make any personal attacks.
Okay, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
I do, that was. Uh, my name is Lauren DeJensen. Um, on these other businesses that supposedly are joint commercial. Uh, like mining teams, uh. What I'm going through the gentleman. Were those? Were the board taking into consideration? Were those? Before? The zoning plans were made because wasn't there? Update? When they got together, the planning conditions are whoever to zone our. Millington Township. Or that was that in place before those?
Understood.
You know, if that was like if they made the new plans in. Nineteen. Ninety, where their business is already established.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Loomis, fifteen sixty three West Milligan Road. Uh, to whom it concerns, according to saying there are no commercial operations in. Ag residential zoning areas. Well, I would like to set the record straight. To clarify, the property at thirty five fifty eight. Pertrun Road is being used for commercial and industrial operations with a township knowledge. In the early days of my first term, I was confronted with a trucking business and. Manufacturing shop at thirty five fifty eight. Pertrun Road. I contacted the owner, had a tour of the property. And shop and sure enough, it was a trucking business and he was manufacturing semi-trailers in the pole barn. After inquiry from the owner about his special use permit, he was very vague and insisted he had permission to operate. After looking through the records, information that I have in the office. I could not find a special land use permit on this property. So I contacted the township attorney. Trying to find information on this property and she sent me to, and he sent me an email stating. That he could have two semi trucks and two show trucks on property with no mention of the manufacturing of semi trailers. This agreement was dated two thousand eighteen and is in effect today. I still didn't understand this property was exempt from the North Hope Special Land Use Procedure. So I contacted Bob Worth. When I contacted Bob, he was aware of the situation because he was involved in the township at the time. Bob told me this agreement was drawn up by. The then supervisor and township attorney because if two of them were caught trespassing on the property. Came up with a side agreement that he wouldn't be charged, so they wouldn't be charged with trespassing. He told me I would.
Us, a minute forty.
Oh, sir.
I apologize. We'll give you ten more seconds.
Okay. And he told me I would not, I would be better off not getting involved because it was agreement drawn up by the attorney. Still not happy with the finding, so I hold. Hold the board the time. That this was an agreement drawn up by attorney and assumed it was legitimate. Board at the time didn't seem surprised and agreed. I was watching the township video about the T C A appeal on May sixth. Twenty twenty five and picked up on Bob Worth mentioning talking as a town. Pertrun Road. After thinking about it, the township is putting Bob Gilling through the ropes. When they miled down the road, we are allowing commercial and industrial businesses to run in ag residential area. So the supervisor and township. Attorney would be charged with trespassing. I feel the same people are putting Bob Gilling through the ropes for years. While disagreement, but done nothing, it doesn't, this correct objective was to shut down the gravel. I have been told for years by the M T A that you cannot allow one resident. To violate the zoning ordinance and then require the next. Resident to abide by the same zoning ordinance, instant lawsuit. So I ask you, what is the difference? They are both ag residential. One is operating a trucking manufacturing business and the other wants to. Sell public, sell to the public, cop soil, stone, sand, and go through the proper procedure.
Thank you.
That's. Almost three. We're in three, sir.
What's that?
You were here. We thank you, yes, thank you.
So the planning commission, I just wanted to mention a few things tonight. You know, Michigan Township Association gets thrown around here to place. Michigan Township Association. They have stated it is unprecedented that this appeal is even here and taking place. This is the second time in this township in the last year and a half. This is it's a. Conflict of interest at the board level. I mean. Everybody knows there's conflict of interest. There's family members talking with people that of have conflicts of interest. There's lawsuits regarding these conflicts. In two thousand seven, there's three documents referring to the, uh, commercial resident or commercial. Um, and it's also on the, uh, site plan of this individual's site plan. The township's lawyer recommendation to the planning commission, you have that document. Um, you know, you know, this board may take it upon itself to make this appeal and do this appeal. And you have every right to do that. We can, we can, uh, maybe do some high fives tonight, but that's what occurs. But when the court of law looks into some of these conflicts and reviews everything very closely. Residents of this township will, will be responsible. For paying for some of these decisions. Please consider. Thank you.
Any others? This paper.
Yes, we have letter.
You're starting the timer?
I'm doing three minutes.
You have no policy regarding it, so you have an option of accepting it or you may read.
I will read it. If however, the property owner purposely removes a significant part of the entire building. Its non-conforming, conforming status is lost. When any new or replacement structures must comply with existing existing zoning. In paragraph enlargement or expansion. Restrictions on expansions or enlargements to non-conforming buildings are common. If allowed, this expansion is often limited to some percentage. Of the area of the building when it first became non-conforming. This distinction is important as a way to avoid cumulative expansions. No zoning ordinances do not permit a building to increase its non-conformity in any way. Extensions of non-conforming buildings. Are sometimes useful but optional ordinance provision. Would allow a non-conforming building to be extended along its existing non-conforming line. But not increasing the degree of non-conformity. For example, if a building is non-conforming because it is constructed too near the sideside lot line. This provision would permit the building to be extended along the same non-conforming. Arreson to a vertical line. As the existing buildings from two rear. If this provision is used for setbacks and accompanying. Regulation should restrict the extension only for existing buildings. That have at least one half of the setback required on the non-conforming side. And all other regulations must be met. Such as height and lot coverage.
Miss Kicker, we may accept that as public comments, but. You may continue with the whole thing.
Okay.
Discretion or secreture.
All right, setback averaging. In some older areas that have a number of unusually, uh, excuse me, of usually. Residential non-conforming buildings. Especially by front setback. The ordinance may provide for setback averaging for a destroyed building. The area from which the averages are taken can be adjoining lots. A set number or distance from the subject lot. Or include all lots within the same block. Which may or may not include both sides of the street. This is most often found in communities that have a significant number of lots, flats and waterfront lots. That have non-conforming setback. Similar determination can be made for side and rear setbacks if desired. Enforcing this provision prevents a new building from having to be set back. Much farther or closer than those on adjacent or nearby. Non-conforming uses. Non-conforming uses are those that were once permitted by the zoning district. But are no longer permitted either because of a change in zoning district. Or a change to the uses allowed in the district. In which the uses are present. The two principal aspects of the regulation of non-conforming uses. Are whether the owner intends to no longer operate the use. And the amount of time that passed since this was deployed. We'll talk about abandonedness. But I'm not going to read them. Replacement substitution. This would allow the replacement of a non-conforming use with another non-conforming use. If the next use is equal to or more conforming than the original. Or the ordinance may require that the new use conform completely to the ordinance. The ordinance may permit a replacement or substitution only after abandonment. Or it may allow it at the dissection of the owner after township approval. An example might be the replacement of a non-conforming retail use in a residential area with an office use. Which would be closer in performance to the residential character of the neighborhood. Non-conforming lots, which is not something that is relevant. Non-conforming site impotence. I am going to use my judgment on some of this. Other non-conforming regulations. Just going to mark the next step so I know. Other non-conforming regulations. Classification. Although not commonly practiced, it is permissible to classify. Non-conformities into ones that are not disruptive to the neighborhood. Or the community. For these, certain non-conforming elements may be considered permissible and subject to relaxed regulations. These non-conforming. Conformities remaining would then be considered undesirable. And subject to the full enforcement. Of the non-conforming regulations. In practice, this requires an inventory of a minimum. Either is a desirable or undesirable non-conformity. And a determination of which regulations apply. Purchase. The township has the ability to classify and purchase non-conformities. This includes the governmental power of condemnation. Will not often accomplish. Certainly that goes. But there is no continuation there. I'm decoding, the next page is. Decoding the complexities of township ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the basis of township's zoning authority. It helps to implement the township's vision. Guide the future of the community. And ensure that local land uses are located and operated in a way that protects the. in a way that protects the public health, safety, and general welfare. Zoning is a complicated, therefore evolving field. Further, much of the language of zoning is unique, using everyday terms that can take on an entirely different meaning in the context of local land use regulations. Breaking the zoning code decodes complexity, sharing and exploration of zoning regulations, why they exist, what they are intended to accomplish, and how they may be used to the benefit of your township. Just goes on to explain the book that has been used this. Thanks. I have.
Who wrote that?
This is the book that.
Who wrote that letter, please?
Um.
You can, when you're finished, you can.
Okay.
If it, if you will, when that wasn't a letter submitted, it could be excerpts from the reference materials. That's all.
Okay, that's what I know I'm reading.
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, so I know you said it's a letter.
I was told that it was a letter.
Not a letter.
Okay, then. We go on reading it or just use it as our.
It's similar to Michigan Township Association.
I know. Have the book.
Okay, I don't, I just didn't want you to continue going with people thought it was.
Okay.
So those appear to be excerpts from the MTA public publications and are accepted as public comment, but are not part of the record of the appeal, scrolls on basis.
Excuse me, but, oh, Mrs. Sittes just said it's not intended to be public comment. It was information that was to be provided to us as background.
I'm sorry.
Well, there was a comment, is this to be added to the public comment or is it just for our information?
It would be nice to be added to public comment if you'll allow it, but it was for your information.
Okay.
We'll add it to public comments.
Okay.
For today's meeting, but not.
Yeah.
And who submitted that? I think it's quite obvious now.
It does not have a name on it?
Each one of them. It was additional documents in support of Tri-County Aggregates State Position.
Okay. Okay. I need to actually state to start reading it.
Well, thank you, thank you for keeping everything honest. Okay. That concludes public comment. Moving on to old business. Be advised, Millington Township Board of Planning Commissions, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five decision, a commercial special land use permit relating to parcel zero one seven, zero three five, zero zero zero, zero one, zero zero, one zero. Tri-County Aggregates, one zero two 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 Sheridan Road, Millington, Michigan. In our last meeting, um, there was a request for legal guidance. Um, each member was sent the legal opinion of the township attorney regarding the alleged conflict of interest with the township board member. The ZBA does have the discretion of holding a closed session to discuss any of the provided attorney client privileged communications. And the township attorney is available for a conference call should it be deemed necessary to hold a closed session. Everybody's received that review of it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to deliberation.
And this is just for A, right?
Correct.
This is just for the special, and then we'll move out to the B.
Yes. Two separate decisions. I'll get started. Okay. Um. I've reviewed all the information and based on the record of evidence, planning commission made an error of law in abuse of discretion for following reasons. One, the request was for a special land use permit of a use that is only permitted in the commercial zoning district per ten point zero two A of the ordinance, property zoned agriculture residential. Two, the planning commission violated section two point zero one of the ordinance, which indicates that there shall be no change of use on the land unless it is in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance. Three, the planning commission violated section eighteen point zero three B of the ordinance, which states, and I quote, "All specific requirements of the zoning district where the proposed use would be located shall be complied." Four, the planning commission violated section four point zero three of the ordinance, which states that any use not expressly listed and determined for special land use within a zoning district is prohibited. Therefore, I would entertain a motion that the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five special land use decision of the planning commission be reversed for those stated reasons. If anybody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, will you read that, that wording again for me so that?
All of the items, would you?
No, no, just the motion that you've read. So I have the wording.
That the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five special land use decision of the planning commission be reversed for those stated reasons. And I can read those again.
And that's okay, I've got the numbers down. Okay, I make a motion to overthrow the, the appeal of the Millington Township Board's planning commission on the basis of the items that we just mentioned. The violations from our ordinance.
You say you're approving the appeal?
Well, no, I, let's, I made a motion to.
Prove the appeal, I thought you said.
I did say that.
Oh, okay, that's.
Which way in essence reverse this?
I think we can reverse affirm.
Right.
I don't think you're going to.
Three choice.
You can't. Okay.
Okay.
Just to make it clear, your, your motion, so would you like to?
Okay.
Rephrase your motion?
Sure, but I'll think.
I, I think you want to make a motion to reverse it.
Okay, to reverse, okay, I did my thought down. To reverse planning commissioners approval of the special land use permit relating to parcel zero one seven, zero three five, zero zero zero, zero one hundred.
Or the reasons?
Or the reasons. Um. The reasons given. The violations of the ordinance.
There's a motion by Kager, there's a second.
Thank you, you need to improve your reasons.
It suggested that be.
Read it again?
No, I think you need to improve your reasons.
I thought I did say for the reasons that we just violated.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Read them specifically.
Okay.
You may read that.
Um, first one, the request was for a special land use permit of a use that is only permitted in the commercial zoning district per section ten point zero two A of the ordinance, a property zoned agricultural, agricultural residential. Second, planning commission violated section two point oh one of the ordinance, which indicates that there shall be no change of use of land unless it is in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance. Third, the planning commission violated section eighteen point oh three of the ordinance, of eighteen oh three D of the ordinance, which states all specific requirements of the zoning district, where the proposed use would be located shall be complied. Four, the planning commission violated section four point oh three of the ordinance, which indicates that any use not expressly listed as permitted for special land use within a zoning district is prohibited.
Motion has been made. Sir, a second.
I agree. I'll second that. Both then by Kager, seconded by folks, any discussion? I, I don't agree with it, I don't think we should reverse it, I think we should affirm it. But I think when we went to the Frank Moon's training, I stayed late to talk to the three attorneys that were teaching us there for MTA. And I think if MTA is being used as guidance, and that should be where we see our, our training and use that as our guidance for our weak decisions. The one lady who had been an attorney, municipal attorney for twenty-five years, she said, I've only seen this one other time in twenty-five years that a township board is, has appealed a planning commission decision. Now, twenty-five years, that happened once. As Mr. Rofferman said, we've done it twice in a year and a half. It, I don't think this should be the norm for Millington Township. As the attorney stated, this is a bad book for our township. We have one government assembly at odds with the others. We're supposed to work together and make the tax dollars of the citizens efficient. We shouldn't be fighting each other on every decision that is made. And I don't think there's any gross negligence here on these issues that you stated. I think if you look at how thick the ordinance is and you make one decision and you try to go through every single page of this ordinance, any decision anyone makes, whether it's the township board, the planning commission, or the ZBA, to be humble, uh, two meetings ago, we almost forgot to, to vote on the main motion for our whole meeting. Uh, thank God Carol remembered and reminded us to, hey, we have to actually vote on that motion we made, so. I don't think anybody's perfect, and I don't think that, you know, hindsight being twenty twenty and going back with a microscope and looking at it. I just don't see. It's, it's easy to find something somewhere, I, I don't see any gross negligence here. I think we, we should affirm the decision.
Mr. Buffalo, it's clear.
The public comment has been closed.
It's three times I go here.
The public comment has been closed.
So those are my thoughts, thank you, those are my thoughts.
Do you have any supporting sections of the ordinance to support that?
I, I don't. Like, like I was saying, I just went through everything you read off. Sure, and, and you know, and I, see, I disagree with John, yeah, just saying. Going by the ordinance, I just went off of what he gave me, I went through it, I looked it up every year. Right. I, I think the dimensional variance we received a week ago, we could have easily shot those people down because we could open the ordinance and we could say, you got to have an acre, you got to have this setback, you have to have this lot with it. And we came together, the ZBA, and we helped those people and we granted them a variance. And I think that is the power of the ZBA is to clean up inefficiencies in local governments, like the board and the planning commission. I think it's our job to clean these up. Like, I don't think reversing this decision is cleaning up at all. I think it's going to make everything worse, and I don't think that's the, 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 the reason behind the ordinance. That's not what zoning is about, the, the gravel pit has a special land use permit. It's in an agricultural area, it's a gravel pit, if you've ever been there, there's satellites coming in and out, there's dust clouds, I mean, there's huge equipment operating all day. The township allowed that. And as other people have stated, the trucking operation on the corner of Bertrand Road and Sheard. I mean, that's another good example, there's other things out there, and I'm not saying we should approve it because there's others out there, but it's also already a special land use permit. There's already a huge operation going on with equipment, bulldozers and payloaders and semi-trucks. It's not like we're, it's not like they've, they've given, you know, an asphalt plant to come in and have, you know, a smokestack and horrible fumes for the area, this is not, this is not a major change for this gravel pit already. This is very similar to the, the nature of operations as they currently exist. So, as I said, I, I don't think this is the right decision to reverse it. Those are my honest, true thoughts. I always try to do the right thing. I own a property very close to the gravel pit. It would probably benefit me to try to, you know, reverse this and get it shut down. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think the right thing to do is be efficient with taxpayer dollars. And I think affirming the planning commission's decision is the right thing to do.
So it was just.
I, I need to remind the group that this is an administrative appeal. This is not about your personal opinion regarding any of these items. It is whether the planning commission acted lawfully within their authority granted by the approved ordinances of this township. We must follow those as our purpose is when those are challenged on these administrative appeals, regardless of who brings them forward. That is our charge to investigate.
Yeah, that is supposedly what, what we do and nothing else, just to see if it was a lawful decision according to our ordinances. And another thing that is besides those lawful ordinances, that gravel pit is shutting down. And, well, the plan is for it to have condos built there in the future. Planets. How does selling landscape material fit in with that?
Isn't that in our package that we have the commercial zoning decision for that article? Was made years ago, that was in our package, right, we all reviewed that?
That, that they were going to be kind, right?
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the, the commercial zoning decision that was made years ago.
The property is zoned agriculture residential based on the appeal application by the township board. It is affirmed by Tri-County Aggregates in their statement of position, which nine line ten. They affirm that the property is zoned agriculture residential. The initial request in our package, which was made by Tri-County Aggregates. Eight six of the package lists the district.
Clearly says what it is. No more discussion? No more discussion?
Okay. Move to a vote. Kayler.
Yes.
Trying to do it by alphabetical order, but I won't just do it around the table. More.
Yes. Folks.
Yes.
Bezansky.
No.
Bernard, I must vote last as chairman. Yes. Motion carries. Next order of business. Appeal by Millington Township Board of the Planning Commission's February tenth, two thousand twenty five. Decision of a reclamation plan related to mining operations at parcel. Zero one seven, zero three five, zero zero zero. Zero one zero zero one zero. Tri-county aggregates, one zero two 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 Sheridan Rowley, known to commission. I wrote that one too. Based on the record of evidence. The planning commission made a premature approval in abuse of their discretion with following reasons. The motion of the planning commission indicates that the application is incomplete. Which violates section seventeen point zero two of the ordinance.
Say it again, Robert, seventeen point zero two.
Two, the motion of the planning commission indicates that the submitted site plan. Submitted plan was incomplete, which violates section five point zero three. Point C of the ordinance. Three. The motion of the planning commission does not make any distinction between a site plan or reclamation plan. Which are two very different documents and processes. Identified by section five point oh three and article seventeen of the Millington Township ordinance. Four, the motion of the planning commission refers to extending a plan in two thousand seven. Which has expired per section seventeen point zero six of the ordinance. Five, the submitted plan indicates that it is both a reclamation and site management. For a site condominium development. While failing to meet the requirements of section five point zero three. Section six point zero two point I. That may be a one. Never, I can bear. And article seventeen of the twenty twenty Millington Township. And for that, it would entertain a motion, February tenth, two thousand twenty five, reclamation plan decision of the planning commission. Be reversed for those stated reasons. If I was standing.
Bye.
Yes.
Would it help to review those ordinances? Before before we make the any motion? Anybody?
It's not timeless, you know.
And this is what you're citing for why we should reverse it?
That is one of the reasons in the. Statement of so is because. If you were viewed. The motion made by. The eighteen of your original package. Is acknowledged. That the plan was not complete. As they state, add new location of sites, office buildings. Site data update, most importantly. But this part does say current mining operation information to be turned into planning commission by August eleventh, two thousand twenty five. Thus reflecting that they did not have a completed plan, which is a necessity of the application. Of a site. And if we review the site plans. The plan itself, age seventy seven of your packet. The title of it is reclamation dash site plan. You look at the top, this is for site condominium development. Furthermore, if we review it compared to the conditions. Or the standards. You would see that they are not. Which that's item five, which covers that. Let's start item five for my statement.
Is that your statement or is that the township board's statement that you're reading off with all the five reasons?
That's my statement.
You drafted that?
Yes, based on the evidence. It's within the record and everything.
So you just have the your copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. I was just trying to do as Carol suggested to go through each one.
Oh. My appreciation.
And seventeen oh two is pretty. Long. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I thought there was, I thought it was seventeen oh two and then A through E or. It's just all of seventeen oh two?
Yep. Starting right at the beginning, because the plan was not complete. Based on the motion made, fact that they were wiring. A plan. To be submitted on August eleventh. Indicates that. Review of their meeting minutes. Through on page seventy one of the packet, it's on February tenth, two thousand twenty five meeting minutes. Savitz suggested waiting to vote on the site plan until the new site plan is turned in. Fletcher stated that all items asked for are not on the completed plan. When it is turned in. Board would not accept it. Though the approval, there there is no process for them to accept. They've approved it already. Motion made by Operman to approve extension with following conditions. One, remove number eight, ten, and eleven on site notes. Two, add new location sites of office buildings, storage and sign location notice. Three, current site plan to follow section five point oh three of Millington Township ordinance. Four, approval is for ten year extension only. Five, current mining operation information returned to planning commission by August eleventh, two thousand twenty five. Six, site data update to reflect the same information two thousand seven, end quote. Back to the next one or? The motion indicates that the submitted site plan was incomplete, which violates five point zero three C of ordinance. C one states, the applicant shall provide an engineer stamp reclamation. The motion in itself, I'd have to go back to that.
You didn't.
But it stated, it said reclamation inside, we'll have to save it, but we have to go back to that. And then it provides detail of what the plan. Including the submission of operational reclamation plan now contained. I can direct you back to page seventy seven. Which is the plan that was submitted. Additionally. There has been an example of this provided in the past by. Millington Township, or I'm sorry, tri-county aggregates. Page is thirty three. Before five. Or thirty six. Six. Seven. Or four. Which I believe is stated in two thousand three.
And fully updated.
That was part of the two thousand five. The full size copy of those are available in the office and represented to planning commission today. The motion of the planning commission was to make an extension between site plan and reclamation plan. We look at five point oh three seventeen of the ordinance. They are two very separate documents, very separate processes. So, as indicated on plans, it's being shown past. When they confirm that, looking back at the motion, number three was current site plan will follow section five point zero three. Is inconsistent in itself because. Site plan is under seventeen. Reclamation is under five point zero three.
You know, Robert, does that uh, the new gravel pit that opened up the same pit on Bertrand Road by Van Horn Properties? So they have a reclamation plan and a site plan?
I don't know. I wasn't part of that decision, nor has it been appealed, which is only the jurisdiction and what we can cover today. I would hope so, however, there may be some zoning. I would hope so, however, there may be some zoning enforcement issues within this community.
Right.
But that's not the ordinance, that's not approval.
No, I understand, I understand.
That's the bad part.
Well, it's just such a mess. I mean, every single one of these decisions, if you look at all these decisions. Every single one of them, going to walk with errors. And my main thought here, that I keep going back to is why is this gonna heal?
So do we, so do we keep continuing this process? Being appealed, taken into the zoning board of appeals, we keep making, we keep making mistakes all the time, is, is there something to this?
Well, there's, there's a lot to it, I think, and I mean, I think the big thing is. In seventeen oh two, Tammy, I swear to God, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus. In seventeen oh two, I mean, it's, that's one of the reasons this is being appealed. And I mean, it's. Seven paragraphs, five subsections, I mean, it's. You, you can go through there with a fine tooth comb and find one little thing where it's. The fees of the township planner in reviewing and making recommendations concerning the application, I mean, they're, they're. I, I just don't think that's the intent, I don't think that's the intent of this. I don't think zoning in general from its inception from. Uh, the city of Babylon, which is where zoning all started and the history of it. Um, it was a city of squalor and there was a city of grandeur and they lived right next to each other and that, that is the beginning of zoning. And it's just trying to put guidelines on what goes where, and I. This looks like a great reclamation plan to me, I mean, he's planning all these trees, have you been out there?
Wait a minute. May I make a statement to that? You can, would you please review the ordinance, section five point zero three? C. D. Each item in there. Against that plan. One by one, just exactly. The charge of the planning commission, and that is why we're here, we are not here. Because of a gravel pit, we are here because of a lining commission. And even in public comment in this township, it has been stated there to be root cause analysis done. Of the issues going on here. And I think you've clearly identified that root cause. But that is not up for us to decide that we are here for this single appeal and does it. Meet the requirements of the ordinance and procedure or not. Did they act appropriately, which is their duty?
I understand, I mean, I, I understand, I just think. That I don't wanna say because. Let's say there's twenty gravel pits in Millington, and nineteen of them don't have a site plan, and nineteen of them don't have a reclamation plan. And this one person who is being, I don't wanna say singled out, but just randomly selected for an appeal by the board. It just seems strange to me that this is the one being appealed. And I understand, it's being presented in a way where we need to look at it and make a decision based on what's being presented to us, but I have to look at the entire thing. And I just don't think it's right. Those are my thoughts.
But we have to look at a board who is making decisions. And don't go along with our ordinances. So we're not looking really at the board, but we're looking at the decision that they made. On the fact that it does not match our ordinances.
I understand. And the appointing authority, maybe they want to look into that. They should be looking at the planning commission, which is once again not our jurisdiction at all.
And I was at the United Monday, and the chairwoman stood up and said, we've made mistakes, we need to work on things, we need to get better.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is unfortunately part of the results of getting better.
Well, I think we've all made mistakes.
Yeah.
I mean.
Always, we're gonna make mistakes.
I just wanna do the most justice for everybody.
Because this, you know, Mr. Gillings has done nothing wrong here, in my eyes.
It's probably the best site plan application that we've ever received, ever in the history of Millington Township. And to sit here and break it apart and say, it doesn't comply with seventeen oh two paragraph C, some checks, some section five. Because the T wasn't crossed on the application pages, it just seems ridiculous to me. We're, we're reversing these decisions on, the planning commission has made. It, it's a, it's a part-time planning commission, named once a month. It's not like these people are fully, fully, it's full-time employee, this isn't the city of Grand Rapids, we don't have the money and the resources to. Train and retain these people to make good decisions over a long period of time. And that is what's frustrating to me, we, all these tax dollars we take in and we allocate and we use and we burn it up on attorney's keys. And waiting to call people in because nobody knows the real answer, nobody understands how to make a motion, nobody understands how to enforce all this stuff, and we're looking back. Under microscope hindsight twenty twenty saying, they didn't cross the T, they didn't dot the I, we should reverse this, I just don't think that's right. And I don't think that's what the intent of the ordinances are, or the intent of zoning. Overall, from its beginning in history, I just, that's not what the intent is.
What is the job, the zoning board of appeals?
I think it's our job to fix errors throughout these two assemblies that seem to be not working out very well together.
Only if there's an appeal, we do not.
Right.
What comes before us, that is only in an appeal. And you mentioned our training. Which, and the main training that we both were at. Site plans, what, was a slide provided by the MTA. And when they referred to site plans, they stated engineers should look over site plan. That is part of the escrow created by the township. And that's part of the review, which. If you look at this site plan and compare it, site reclamation plan, it sure itself shows some issue. But you compare that to the ordinance. It doesn't fit.
Right, I understand. And like, I'm trying to throw Tammy in the mix. Tammy is the first line of experience, as soon as this application is created, it goes to Tammy, Tammy should have looked at this and said. Well, this isn't a, this isn't a site plan, this is a reclamation plan, you need two of these, I mean, this should have been the first thing in the world. So, that's why I'm saying, we're, we're picking at what point. It was chosen what point to appeal this process, but it's just like I said, it's not, it's not the intent. It's not the intent, it's not the right thing to do. Those are my thoughts, I understand you made a motion, you're looking for a statement.
Actually, motion does not yet have been made, so.
Oh, and I, I agree with you, I do. That's what, you know, sitting here, you know, always looking forward to follow your methods. Do we widen our, you know, horizon up and, you know, let's go for this and, and make some changes?
We can't make a change to a site plan, we violate the ordinance in itself.
I did not suggest that.
I, I said, I, you know, is that what we start doing, then we violate the ordinances too?
Yeah, well.
Are the ordinances violated, then this following your notices. That's the question, yes or no question.
Right, I, I understand that's the question, but my parents. Were asking this question on this case only, and we're considering this case only. If there were twenty other gravel pits in Millington Township and nineteen of them didn't have a site plan, didn't have a reclamation plan, didn't have any of this stuff done. And we're singling out one person in one operation.
We're not singling them out. They have been, the, the decision of the planning commission has been appealed.
Right.
And that's our job to handle the appeal after somebody questions.
I get it, what I'm saying is, when we make our decision, we have to look mad on everything else that's been done. How can we draw a line in the sand right now, this person has?
Well, you. But you're giving an, if you let it go, you're giving an example to a hundred and fifty people after this. Well.
Do you think that variance we just approved, if anyone else comes in with a happy year lot, do you think we're gonna guarantee everyone that same variance?
I, I don't know, it's just, you're saying, there's so many already here, why not let this one go?
That's one way to look at it, I just don't, I, I don't think that the planning permission, they're making mistakes. I don't think we should be reversing these decisions because they made. Minor errors.
Some of them are not so minor. One of them for being something that doesn't yet exist is not minor. And that's what they did.
Well, like I said, it's, it's hard, if, if you just have one to look at, it's hard, if you look at many of them and compare this to the others. I think this is, like I said, probably the best special land use permit ever submitted to Millington Township. And it's being singled out. And I don't think we should reverse it. Those are my thoughts.
My thoughts are, I have followed the ordinance and such, and I was put here. That's it, that's what I was pledged to do.
All right, can you speak up, I don't wanna see you.
I would put here to, you know, follow the ordinances, that's what I took a pledge to do. And clearly, they have violated, sad to say. Cause I don't want, I agree with Nate, I do, you know, I don't wanna see Mr. Gillings, you know, go down this road. You know, this is, this is getting out of control, we're here every, every two, three times a month now. Am I right, Nate?
Yeah, I, I think it's happening way too much, and, and once again, I don't. Whether or not it's a gravel pit, I just don't want this to be the, the standard for Millington Township, is the township board fighting with the planning commission and appealing all their decisions on the township's dollar. Which, don't forget, that comes from your property taxes, it comes from us, all, everyone in this room is paying in the past. Everyone in this room is paying for the township board and the planning commission disagreeing with it. Yep, that makes us look very mad. So who created the problem, I don't know, I don't know who created it, it could have been the board, it could have been the land person, I don't know. Well, if, like I said, if there was twenty other gravel pits and the other nineteen got approved and Tammy approved their site plans. And the, the board didn't say anything, and now all of a sudden this one's being appealed, it makes me wonder why.
Could it be possible that all of them found the ordinances?
No, no, it's not, it's not even remotely possible, that's what I'm saying, this is the best site plan that's in existence in the entire township. And it's being appealed. And also, there's a gravel pit right around the corner.
May I ask a question? Is it the best site plan or is it the best reclamation plan? Or the best site condominium development plan?
I don't, I think.
Those are three different areas within our ordinance.
If they just put a stash in there, maybe everybody would be happy on the title, I don't know what to tell you about that, like I said, dotting the, the I's and crossing the T's. Uh, Mr. Gillian put a lot of time and energy and money, obviously, into this, and he does, he's done a very great job, and he's out there. It's beautiful, it's gonna be a beautiful place, he's building a lake, he's planting landscaping trees, it is, it is crazy for the board to be fighting this. That's how I feel about it, it's, and, and once again, I understand, it's the ordinances, it's, um. Very stiff, you can look through here and find one section that contradicts another section that gets you what you want and you can deal with it, that's how I look at it.
I understand how we feel.
Well, I think.
Not.
We have the power to make a decision.
Which must be based on objective.
Right.
Facts, it must be. Even per public comment submitted tonight, you look at that MTA book, it states that, statement of findings. And those must be based on facts. Just as the planning commission decision. Here it is. That's it. So, and I agree with you, it should not be here, it should not.
No, no, it shouldn't.
This was not created by the ZVA, you are hearing the appeal. And who submitted the appeal is not. Really an issue of this either, it's, is the appeal valid or not? Does it meet our requirements, because we have requirements in this ordinance, the appeals. And we can review those as well.
That's where it's yours to see the ordinance. Whether it's right or wrong, the ordinances are not being met, whether it's who's our. Planning commission, whatever, it, the ordinances are not being met, that is our life. We are the zoning board of deals, we are here to make sure that the ordinances are being met, and they are not being met. It's unfortunate. They are not being met. That's what we are here to decide, whether the ordinances are being met or not, they are not being met. Plain and simple. And, and, and this, and this, you know, I agree with you, because so much flow down the road. I agree with you one hundred percent, and I agree with. Who shares at the, at the end, but. At the end of the day. We have to follow the ordinances, and that's what this board is here for, is to make sure the ordinances are being applied.
Are there more things that we need to review or somebody needs to make a motion?
I don't make a motion. And make a motion to reverse the. Planning commission's decision. Excuse me, planning commission's February tenth, twenty twenty five decision on our reclamation plan. Related to parcel zero one seven, zero three five, zero zero zero. Zero one zero zero ten, Tri-County Aggregates, ten twenty ten. Two two two, Sheridan Road, Millington, for the stated violations of the ordinances.
Which we need to have included.
Which we will include. Thank you.
I'll have you read off if you.
Okay, I will read them. Should have done that with the first one, we did not read them again, did we?
Yes.
Okay. The motion of the planning. Commission indicates that the application was incomplete, which violates section seventeen point oh two of the ordinance. Second, the motion of the planning commission indicates. That the submitted plan was incomplete, which violates section five point oh three C of the ordinance. The motion of the planning commission does not make any distinction between a site plan or reclamation plan. Which are two very different vacuums and processes identified by. Section five point oh three and article seventeen of the Millington Township ordinance. The motion of the planning commission refers to extending the plan from two thousand and seven. Which has expired per section seventeen point oh six of the ordinance. The submitted plan indicates that it is both a reclamation. And site plan for site condominium development, while failing to, to meet the requirements of section five point oh three. Section six point oh two five and article seventeen of the twenty twenty Millington Township ordinance.
That was a big motion.
I know. Well. And we need, yes.
Thank you.
And we need support.
So we have a motion made by Kager. We have a second. Oh, second. Opened by Kager, seconded by close, is there any discussion? Okay, move on to roll call, alphabetical order this time, um. Both.
Yes.
Kager.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Zansky.
No.
Bernard, yes, motion carries. Move on to new business. Moving on to new business. There is none. Notice public hearings, there are none. Go on to ZVA member comments, including the training updates. Anybody else?
Did you have a comment?
I do have one to make.
Well, I did milk, yeah, you did.
He, he said something.
I.
Yes, I do.
Can hear it.
Oh, yes, I do have something to say.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you said no, oh, I thought here it said.
I do have something to say, is, you know, we were discussing this whole thing, Nate, you're absolutely right. It sadly developed this way, sad we're here all the time now, because we need to address. The township need to address why we're having these issues, this goes farther than us, we can't, we can't make a decision. You know, I agree with you, I feel bad, Mr. Gillings, because he's here again. That is the sad part. I have been all to his place, he has a beautiful place, he's trying to do everything right. If everybody around him would do everything right, his life would be wonderful. And, and I truly believe that, guys, you guys probably have been out there, he does have a nice facility, they just missed some steps here. And, you know, I, I've been at every meeting for years now, and, you know, things are getting better. I think this, it's gonna change, you know, things are getting better. They're trying to change things, and I think we're gonna stop, start seeing less of this. As they all look at, like I said, they're nice, and, you know, things are, and they're trying to do better. And I truly believe that's gonna happen, so. That's all I got.
Thank you for correcting me. My comment, um, on June sixteenth, um, the township board discussed the request of the ZVA to adjust compensation. Some kinds of special meetings in an evening, that was an item that you brought up.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the issue died due to lack of support.
Oh.
And part of it was stated that, uh, they queried the planning commission. Had such a policy.
Right.
They do not.
Okay, well, that's interesting, at least we tried, or at least we tried, thank you.
Yep, I did my duty as voted, so. So that's my comment, any others? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn. Motion by Bernard, seconded by Moore. Um, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay, needing a adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I hear. That on you?
Yeah.
What about the?
I was, I'm, I'm still.
Not just.